At this time, I will call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Welcome to the members of the Board, our administrative team, the district team, parents, and members of the public. May is the month where the Board annually goes through the process of reorganization. The process for reorganizing the Board consists of the election of officers. The first office selected is the Board President. Do I have a nomination for Board President?
I would like to nominate Keith Anderson.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we need to do a roll call?
Don't you need to ask for any more nominations?
Any more nominations? There we go. Any more nominations? Any more nominations?
At this time, I'll move to cast unanimous ballot and close nominations for Board President for Keith Anderson.
Second. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your support. We'll move on now to...
Go ahead and ask for a vote on that.
Do I need to? Or does he need to?
Just to make sure, just to announce that it's a unanimous vote?
Yep. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Now we'll move on to nominations for Vice President. Are there any nominations for Vice President?
I'll nominate Chelsea Whitley for Vice President.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I'd move to close nominations for Vice President and cast unanimous ballot for Chelsea Whitley for Vice President.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Do we need a second? Do we need a second for that? No?
No. It's a cast. It wasn't a motion. Okay. There, Chelsea is our Vice President. Nominations for Clerk, Board Clerk. Are there any nominations for Board Clerk?
I nominate Dale Johnson for Board Clerk.
I'd second that.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I'll move that we close nominations and cast unanimous voice ballot for Dale Johnson as Board Clerk.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Dale is our Clerk. And now for Board Treasurer, are there any nominations?
I would nominate Shar Glenna for Clerk, or for Treasurer, sorry. We're all one behind you.
I'll second that. I'll take that nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? And any other nominations?
I make a motion that we close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Shar Glenna as Treasurer.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And your Director, thank you.
There you go.
Next on the agenda is our meeting dates and our pamphlets, our booklets, for the 21-22 Board Meeting Dates. Please note them. I don't think anything was different.
Only one word of mention, March 21st was selected rather than the 14th, which would typically be the date. That's because spring break would be that week, so it was selected March 21st. Other than that, they are at the same times of years every other year.
All right. Is there a motion to accept those meeting dates?
So moved. A second.
Motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Next, we have our designation of district depositories. Do you want to explain those?
The official depositories that we've used for decades here are Brember Bank, Wisconsin Credit Union, Wells Fargo Bank, Associated Trust Company, Chase JP Morgan, Wisconsin Investment, Series Cooperative, and MG Trust. Those have been the same for a long time.
I make a motion that we approve the official depository list for 2021 to 2022.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to designate the below-listed official depositories for the School District of Amory. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
If you could get closer to the mics so our translator can hear what's being said.
All right.
Thank you for all of us, not just you.
Thank you. I will. Next is our appointment for our WASBA, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and CISA 11 delegates. In the past, I think, Erin, you were CISA 11?
Yes. I am, I'm on the CISA Board of Control, so I do actually go, you know, need to be there for the meeting, which is right after the CISA 11 delegate meeting, so I would be willing to fill that role again for our representative from our school district.
Okay.
And I think you were WASB last year, but then I've been WASB for the past, like, four or five years. I don't mind doing that, being the delegate for WASB, and if for some reason I can't attend, then you would be the backup, kind of like what we've always done.
Sounds fine.
Okay. And that's an appointment. I don't know if we need a motion or not?
It's an appointment. It isn't.
So...
So you go ahead and appoint them.
All right. They're appointed. Got it done. Now we'll go, authorization for use of independent hearing officers for expulsion hearings held in the current and next year. That would be the attorney...
We have used Well Dryly since the time I've been here, which is at least 15 years, so Well Dryly is who we've used, and I would recommend we continue to use them.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize for those?
I would make a motion to continue using Well Dryly as our independent hearing officers.
And a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Chelsea. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Then we have our Board Appointed Committee Advisory.
There have been some changes to the Board Appointed Committees, and you'll see them listed on the screen, the committees, that is, Building and Grounds, Community Ed, Curriculum Oversight, Human Growth and Development, Information Technology, and Outdoor Education. The changes have been folks that have either retired or departed from the district for another reason, and we have resupplied the committee with a new person, if you will. But that's really, all that really has changed.
And we can have more than one Board Member on one of these committees?
Up to two, because once you get past two, it's a quorum.
And I believe since Keith is President, he would be a member of all of them, and then I would be the Buildings and Ground Committee, and I know I've always participated in that, on that committee in the past anyway, so nothing's really going to change.
Yep. That'll work.
So do we need a motion to put Chelsea Whitley on there, or just appointed? Is this board appointed? Yep.
These are appointed.
Yep. Then if at some time you feel so moved to join a committee, you certainly can. So that's it for that. The consented items were mine this month, and so I will make a motion to accept those.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Now we'll come to our Community Comments section. We have a list of people that would like to speak. I'm glad that you're here. We are here to listen to you, and so please, when you address us, I'm going to read this kind of guideline that we have for our Community Comments. Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Education of the School District of Amory. We are pleased that you are interested in school district education issues. Your input may be very beneficial to the development of appropriate educational programs. You may address the Board only during the Community Comments time on the agenda. Amory School District residents, district employees, and guests invited by the Board may address the Board at the discretion of the presiding Board Member. In order for the meeting to flow smoothly, we would appreciate that the following guidelines be followed by anyone wishing to address the Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the Board, a sign-up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign-up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding Board Member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the meeting, start of the meeting. Thank you. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at any time by the presiding Board Member. The time allowed for Community Comments may also be entered at the determination of the presiding Board Member. Comments and suggestions related to the school district operation are welcome. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the Amory School District is out of order. Please stand to be recognized, and after being recognized, please give your name and address for the record. The Board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there's a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators may get back to you within the next week. If your concern requires Board action, it may be placed on the agenda of future Board meeting, and I want to thank you for your cooperation. So...
A reminder, when you speak, if you get in close to the mic so the translator can hear. Thank you.
Yes. Our first speaker is Donna Anick.
Hello. I'm Donna Anick, 145 Highland Street in Amory. I have two letters. One is from myself, and one is from a community member that cannot be here. So I just want to thank the School Board, thank the administration, all the people that run our school for getting us safely through this school year, almost safely. We got three weeks to go. When this school year started, neither the School Board, nor Dr. Dierfler, nor the principals, nor the parents had a manual that said, "In case of pandemic," turn to page 43, or whatever. I think we all know that this was uncharted territory, and as a teacher, I just appreciate so much all the work that was put in for all of us to stay safe. I think everyone did an amazing job, including our students. I look at our students, and I watch them come in. They don't complain. They come and they do what they need to do, and we've been able to be in person, which has just been amazing. So I'm so appreciative of that. So we have three weeks to go, and I'm really hoping we can just keep going in the same safe way that we have done. It's been amazing what everybody has done and pulled together. Second, I just have a letter from a community member also, pretty short, and this is what it says. "We would like to thank the Amory Public School Administration and School Board for keeping the staff and students safe the past 15 months by following the public safety guidelines pertaining to COVID-19 provided by the CDC and DHS. Sometimes in life, you are called upon to do what is best for public safety, and by doing so, put your own desires aside. That builds character and compassion and helps make a safe and respectful community of citizens. We should thank those who come up with ways to keep everyone protected and provide the best education and safest activities possible during a pandemic. Signed, Marty and Wanda Rimsted in Amory, Wisconsin." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have April Bowe.
April Bowe, 912 Sunflower Way, Amory, Wisconsin. Good evening. I wanted to start by taking a moment to publicly thank my children's teachers for all they have done to make this school year the best it could possibly be. Your hard work and dedication has not gone unnoticed, and I support you and the entire staff of the Amory School District. My speaking at this meeting in no way takes away from that sentiment. I stand here tonight asking the School Board of Amory to, at minimum, publicly declare and vote for our children to not have to be subject to mandatory masking in the fall of 2021. It is time for the School District and Board to acknowledge the need for mandatory masking of our children is over. What started out as a questionable public health measure has turned into an experiment of complete social control. I'm going to start with the basic assumption that masks have actually worked in slowing the trajectory of this virus. Although it does feel good to believe the mask did help, the reality is, it's all about theoretical hypotheses and assumptions by our medical community. Some say, "But think of how much worse it could have been if we didn't have the mask mandate." It's pretty hard to prove a negative, but I can share with you the data we do have. Between Wisconsin and Minnesota, the data shows two different stories. To date, Minnesota has both more cases per million and deaths per million than Wisconsin does, and I don't think I need to remind anyone about the very strict lockdowns Minnesota enacted over its own residents and the mask mandate that the governor put in place on July 25th. Although Wisconsin technically had a mask mandate, it was never truly enforced in our county or surrounding counties, and the stay-at-home order was shot down last May. This meant Wisconsinites were allowed to live their lives. So tell me, what good was the mask mandate and strict lockdowns if you cannot even show a better outcome in case count or lives saved? Or how about an example closer to home? On March 31st, the day the Wisconsin Supreme Court overturned the mask mandate, a neighboring school district, Unity Schools, made the choice to honor their students' civil liberties and do away with the mask requirement. Again, if masks truly were effective, it would be expected that Unity would have seen an increase in cases. This was not, and continues to not be, the case. In fact, if you compare Amory's cases to Unity's since then, and control for this district size by comparing cases per thousand, Unity has had six cases per thousand, and Amory has had 14 per thousand, more than double the cases in a district that has continued to force a mask mandate policy. I believe in public health. I have dedicated my life's profession to promoting public health, but at the end of the day, I have never let my passion cloud my judgment of what makes America so great, freedom to make our own choices for ourselves and our families. The CDC recommends many things for Americans to keep them healthy, but they are just that, recommendations, not requirements. It is with all of this in mind that I was very saddened to see the slides for tonight's meeting still include the same verbiage as what parents received in an email communication from the district administrator over a month ago. Masks will continue to be mandatory for students and staff for at least the rest of the school year and undetermined for the fall. Again, it is explained this is largely due to three underlying reasons. Face coverings are deemed essential by Polk County Health, DHS, and CDC to remain in face, to face, trying to keep students eligible for school activities, and lastly, our students, staffs, families, and community are not yet fully vaccinated. I personally don't agree with those reasons, and now the CDC is saying any adult who is fully vaccinated, which I am, no longer has to wear a mask indoors or outdoors. Another big change, and the most impactful in my eyes, is in response to that last reason, the staff and community are not fully vaccinated. This is no longer the case. We are there. The vaccine was made available to every person in the state of Wisconsin the week of April 12th. Anyone who wanted a vaccine could have gotten one by now, and it is my understanding that the district's own offering of vaccines to its staff concluded with dose two on April 23rd, and they were considered fully vaccinated and protected on May 7th. And with staff members who are fully vaccinated comes the freedom of not having to quarantine them. This should help significantly with the fears of having to shut down schools based on staff shortages. And lastly, I do think it's a little funny to list a reason for a face mask to ensure all students are eligible when you continue to quarantine healthy students anyways. It is now that I must ask, who are we trying to protect by forcing our kids to wear masks? If it is the vulnerable, they have been vaccinated for months if they chose to be. Is it the teachers? They too could now be fully vaccinated. Is it the kids themselves? If that is the case, we would be better off sending them out the door every day with a life jacket, considering more than 1,000 kids die every year from drownings. Compare that to the 277 U.S. deaths from COVID since last January of 2020 for those zero to 18. I'm not here to minimize those deaths, but if we are turning into a society where the goal is zero sickness and death, we are in trouble. I'd like to end by saying my speaking today is meant to support everyone in this community, including those district staff members who feel like they can't speak up for their own personal beliefs. I'm not asking for there to be a policy against masks. I'm simply asking for my children's freedoms to be recognized as well and drop the requirement. The same discussion is happening in countless school districts across the country, and many are choosing choice instead of mandates for their students. Yes, our kids may be used to them, and some even feel, you know, okay about it, but I'm willing to say most kids wouldn't choose to wear a mask if it wasn't required. Again, I say it is time for the district to recognize the need for the requirement is over, and please vote for ending the mandate and say yes to bringing back those beautiful smiling faces. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mark Andrin.
Mark Andrin, 773 75th Street. I was fortunate enough to have gone to school at Amory. I attended Amory K through 12 and felt honored to be a graduate of Amory High School. I feel so strongly about the great education, learning opportunities, and athletic programs, excuse me, that when it was time for my oldest son to start school, we moved back to the district to give our children the same opportunities. Growing up here and working in law enforcement the past 10 years here, I formed a lot of close relationships with many of the teachers, coaches, and support staff here in the district. When a school district employee messaged me privately and told me that they fully support the efforts of myself and others, but they cannot add their name to a petition or feel that they can even like a post on social media due to the level of pressure they feel from the school district, I feel that is wrong. When I hear that staff members are told that they represent the school even on their own time when they're in public to have to wear masks in public, I feel that's wrong. Our district employees should be free to decide for themselves how to best keep themselves and their families safe. They should also be able to express their opinions publicly through open communication and social media as well, as many in this room feel free to do. Some of you may know that I left law enforcement beginning this year after receiving my nursing degree in the last year. At work, I'm required to wear a mask. I get it. I wear it. Patients are not required to wear masks in their own room regardless of our presence in the room. This includes COVID patients. The difference is level of protection. If I have a COVID-19 patient, I am required to wear an N95 mask, gloves, a disposable gown, eye protection. I'm also required to wear a new mask for every shift, not keep recycling the same mask due to buildup of harmful bacteria or respiratory concerns. How many of our kids are given a new mask every day? That said, we have recently seen a downturn in COVID cases with the Polk County Public Health Department report today on their website that in all of Polk County, there are currently only four patients hospitalized with COVID-19. The school district of Waukesha, town with 80,000-plus residents, recently suspended the practice of quarantining so-called close-contact students. Rather, they have entrusted the parents to monitor their children, keep them home if they show symptoms. School districts in our area who have reversed their position on masking have seen a decrease in COVID-19 cases. We need to make common sense decisions for our district, and common sense does take the mask off the kids. Any student or staff that wants to wear a mask, do so. I feel like the teachers should have the same freedom to choose how to best protect themselves as well. Back in November, my wife and I both tested positive for COVID-19, as well as our oldest son, who was home from college. That meant our youngest son, sophomore here, had to stay home for the 10 days of the last positive test we had, plus 14 days past that 10 days, which was a total of 24 days. And then the school district shut down, and he was home until, I believe it was December or January. At the time, he was in the house with us and was tested several times during that period, and after, as a part of his job, he never tested positive. Cole's grades during the time at home dropped dramatically, Ds and Fs. When he returned to school within two weeks, his grades were back up to As and Bs. There's a huge difference between learning online and in person for some kids. There's also been a lot of talk about curriculum in the district lately, and I, as a parent, am definitely concerned with some of the things that I've seen coming from our schools. My biggest concern, however, was a comment a Board Member who stated on social media, and I quote, "In light of the recent events, I want to make people aware that they are still free to choose. They are free to choose a public school that suits their needs and expectations. They are free to homeschool their children. They are free to enroll in private school. They are free to enroll in an online option." Is this a message that we should be receiving from any member of the School Board? If you don't like it, leave? I know many parents are strongly considering it based on that statement. However, there are many of us who would rather work with the district because we do feel it is the best place for our kids. Otherwise, we'd have moved them already. I also want to say that I support, excuse me, I also want to say that I support each and every teacher, coach, and every other staff member of the district. It has been suggested on social media and the local newspaper, if you don't want kids to wear masks, you don't support the staff. That could not be further from the truth. Thank you.
Next, I have Ella Williamson.
Ella Williamson, 1123 Little Falls Circle, Amory, Wisconsin. Good evening. My name is Ella Williamson, and I am a senior at Amory High School. I stand before you all today with four days left in my career as an Amory Warrior. On Sunday, I will walk across the stage with my classmates, gather our diplomas, and move out into the world as the adults we have grown to be. Tonight, I would like to offer my thanks to the School District of Amory. Thank you for the excellent education I have received over the past 14 years, as well as the life lessons learned by participating in multiple extracurricular activities. Many people in this school district have had a positive impact on my life and have helped make me who I am today. I would like to thank Dr. Dierfler, the School Board, and the School Administration for making hard decisions this school year to keep us in school as much as possible, and to offer participation in our normal extracurricular activities, even if some things had to look a bit different this year. Two years ago, I decided to run for the Miss Amory Royalty Court. I have always been proud of the community I grew up in. It was small, but it was friendly and kind, with great schools and community resources. And because of this, I wanted to represent my community. As part of the interview process, I was asked what would draw people to the community of Amory. I echoed my previous comments about Amory being a close and tight-knit community where people were always talking, interacting, and making you feel welcome. However, some members of our community are putting that at risk by talking negativity about individuals and the school district. Regardless of what the school district does, it never appears to be good enough. It is one thing to feel strongly about an issue. It is another to personally attack and post that on social media. We have learned in our schools that social media bullying is not only unacceptable but very dangerous. Specifically attacking individuals is not the way to solve the problem. We are a better community than that. I realize that wearing a mask is a very controversial issue for some. What is disappointing to me is that the lesson in empathy seems to be lacking in conversations regarding mask use. Nothing in my life has taught me more about empathy than my job at a local nursing home. Since August, I have participated in activities, meals, and numerous window visits. One resident could show me a calendar she used to track the dates between in-person family visits. It had been one year, three weeks, and two days since visitors were allowed in. Every time the county COVID numbers rise, we have to put restrictions on guests, which is challenging for some of our most vulnerable community members. Although the CDC recommendations are changing for vaccinated people, empathy needs to be part of the conversation occurring in regards to continued mask use and social distancing. So in closing, I again want to offer my thanks to the School District of Amory for making tough decisions and compromises throughout the school year. Please continue to be diligent in protecting the needs of all in a safe and socially responsible way. Like everyone, I am hopeful we are back on the path to normal. I am hopeful that unlike the class of 2020, my classmates and I will be able to attend in-person classes in college in the fall. But for now, I will do my best to enjoy the rest of Senior Week and prepare for the first home track meet, which is tomorrow. Because even if things aren't perfect, I am thankful for the opportunities the School District of Amory has given me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Melinda Johnston.
She will be speaking for herself.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll be speaking for my phone. Oh, give me a minute here. Erin, can you help me out, please? I believe you have five board, right? Well, this is all five board. This is a petition.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Melinda Johnston, and I'm a mother of two children. I have a daughter who go to Amory Intermediate School and a son who go to Liam Elmento School. My husband is supposed to be here, but he unfortunately might not be make it, but I'm going to just take a few things. First of all, we want to thank you for some of the decisions that you have made in the past, for keeping kids in school by revising the stay in the green requirement and letting summer school kids attend without masks. I have been happy with this experience with the Amory School System. Teachers and staff have been great. Teachers and staff have been great. This is my husband's quote, so I'm going to do it for him because he's not the soccer with the kids, so I apologize. For his quote is, "It's past time to remove the mask policy. Remove the quarantine of the kids that are not sick. Let the family decide what is the best, family's best interest, if they want to wear a mask or not." In this petition here, I'm just going to read the beginning of the petition and then just keep it. "We, the parent, resident, and taxpayer of the Amory School District, are requesting you to immediately remove the requirement for face covering in our school district. We believe that parents should be the ones making decision regarding the individual health and safety of our children, not the school. It is unlawful and unhealthy to continue to require our children to wear face covering. Face covering are emergency authorized products for medical use in a declared state of emergency. They are not FDA approved in federal law Title 12 U... yeah, sorry. U.S.C. 360BB-3. We, the emergency use authorization state, all unapproved products are optional. By law, you must allow students, staff, parent, and visitor while on public, tax paid school property, the option to wear a mask or not to wear a mask. We are asking that Dr. Sean Dohfer and the Amory School Board immediately start upholding the oath that you took and start following the law. We also request you to immediately revise the policy for those for close contact and put an end to quarantine healthy students who show no symptoms at the time of contact. Roughly 50% of Amory's sixth graders who are healthy are currently home in quarantine. Unnecessary quarantine of large number of students has had negative impact to students' and family lives in the area of social, emotional, mental, physical, and financial health. We, the undersigned, believe that parents should solely be making the medical decision for our children. No medical device or intervention should be forced upon students by entity outside of their guardian. By signing this petition, we officially and respectfully ask you to immediately end the requirement of the mask and to revise an overreaching quarantine procedure in Amory School. We remind you to uphold the oath that you took and follow the law as it is written. Thank you."
Thank you.
So I take it Kevin's not going to make it for this. Melinda?
Melinda.
The next one I have then is Mara Stone.
Hi, I'm Mara Stone, 1219 45th Avenue, Amory. I want to start off by saying I am very thankful to all of our teachers and staff and kids as we have all had a difficult year. That being said, it has also been a very frustrating year for parents. We have elected a school board that was supposed to be the voice of our parents and community, but instead of being our voice, they have let us down by not listening to the majority of parents. It is time to get our kids out of masks. Yes, I know that summer school is optional, but why not give the kids the freedom they deserve for the last few weeks of school? And what does fall look like? As parents, we need to know what the decision for fall is going to be sooner rather than later. Yes, all we know... Yes, we all know that we have choices, and a lot of us will be making our choices as to where we send our kids next school year depending on the mask policy. It is not too early to make a decision. It's time to eliminate the mask policy completely. We, as parents, have a right to make decisions, to mask or not to mask, depending on what is best for our kids and our families. Our right of choice has been taken away. We have been told over and over again that Amory has been following the guidelines of the Health Department, the hospital, and the CDC. The CDC has lessened their recommendations, and the key word there is recommend. The Health Department and the hospital also recommend, but Amory has chose to turn that word into required. I know many children are struggling, mine included. Almost daily, when I pick my kids up, they have headaches. Their moods have changed, they get frustrated easier, they are overly tired, and it is weighing on them. I used to have kids that loved school, and now most days, they tell me they hate it. When will we start considering the psychological and emotional damage we are causing these children? The other aspect I would like to address is what is being taught in school. It is not the school's place to teach our children politics, critical race theory, gender, sexual orientation, ethnicity, religion, or how we see each other by race, which are all questions my eighth grader was asked this year. These are the things that are dividing our students, not uniting them. School is where you should be... they should be teaching English, social studies, math, science, gym, music, the good old-fashioned school subjects. The other matters are for home. It is our board's job to know what is being taught to our children and to review the curriculum in our school. It is time to step up and do what is right despite feeling uncomfortable or pressure from others. I know many of you on the school board do not believe in masks yourselves, and it is time to stand up. We elected you to be our voice. So far, none of you are standing up for us as parents and for what you know is best for our kids. What is best for our kids is for our kids and their parents to have a choice. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Next, I have Melissa Vierkant.
Melissa Vierkant, 1181 45th Avenue. The first thing that I would like to say is those of us trying to get our kids out of masks, we aren't stomping our feet because we aren't getting our way. We're trying to protect our kids, we're trying to do what we feel is best for our family. As a school board, I thought your job was to represent the voting public. Who up there is representing those of us against this policy? I would imagine there's at least one of you. Now that the mask mandate is over, as board members, can you honestly tell me you still wear your mask if you get together with family and friends, or have a playdate with your kids and their friends, while going to the grocery store, or even play bingo at the local bar? I don't think so. Can you honestly tell me you think it's a good idea for a healthy child to wear a piece of cloth over their face for seven hours a day when all it does is collect germs? Masks are causing even more bullying and division in the schools. If we want to work on lessening that, getting rid of the mask policy would be a good place to start. Why can't we let the kids be kids? Why can't we just let the teachers teach instead of being the mask police? We need to come back together as a school and a community and not keep dividing ourselves. I also understand that not everyone will be happy with decisions that are made. However, if people were given a reasonable choice, it would ease a lot of the stress and anxiety that parents are having. Our kids have suffered the most and long enough, and I believe it's time to be done with the mask policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I have Julie Vierkant.
Julie Vierkant, Amory, Wisconsin. Good evening. We, the parents, are demanding that the board retract the face covering policy from our school's manual. This oversteps civil liberties established by God and Constitution. We do not forsake our civil liberties due to a health crisis. That does not mean we mandate that no one wear a mask, but leave it up to everyone's personal choice. We are given facts and data, then decide what's best for us and our families. What is the definition of a public health pandemic? From the CDC website, 2018, there were 868 deaths for 100,000 people. 2019, there were 870 deaths for 100,000 people. Last year, for 2020, there's 829 deaths for 100,000 people. We had less deaths last year for 100,000 people than over the last three years. Does this make sense that we have to shut down and do the mask mandate, quarantineing for a lesser death rate than the last three years? The CDC has now granted adults who are vaccinated to be indoors and outdoors without wearing masks. This means that everyone should now be able to go freely. COVID vaccines cannot be mandated due to the Emergency Use Authorization Act. Everyone who wants one has up to to get one. Those who choose to not be vaccinated take on the risk of contracting COVID-19, as those who did get the vaccine should now be immune to catching COVID, as that is what vaccines are meant to do. Children have not... have been proven to not be super spreaders, as the media likes to portray. They've actually shown to be buffers for adults. Their bodies are awesome germ-making and germ-fighting machines, and shed the good germs to us adults. Stop punishing them for being children. My kids ask every day, when they're done with... when are they done wearing masks? They come home tired, crabby, and with headaches. My son suffers from allergies that have been especially brutal this year, and my daughter's had a cough for the past month she can't shake. I called the CDC last Thursday to ask where the science is behind the recommendations. The girl was on the phone for me for 20 minutes. She was very nice, but I was on hold for 15 of those 20 minutes. She had to escalate my call to a higher up because she could not answer my questions. I have not heard back yet. I have another one, two, seven days to hear back from them. Please ask, please stop this. The kids have suffered enough. Thank you.
We'll now move to administrative reports?
Yes.
The first item on administrative reports are run through a PowerPoint. You will see the slides up on the screen. The first is the matrix that you've seen many times before. Our last window was last week, Wednesday, and that window is our last window. We didn't feel it a good idea to do another declaration on the 26th for June 4th end of school year, so the message went out that that's our last checkpoint, if you will, for in the green. And thankfully, we've been in the green since we came back for Christmas break. The second slide is the Polk County number and the district number since last week. We are still tracking numbers. We haven't had any cases in the district, and you'll see there in blue the cases in the county. The next slide are... and please interrupt or ask questions, however you see fit, board. I'm just going to keep tooling along, and you can chime in wherever you want. The positive case in the cases in the district, this is a tracker since September 1st, which is the first day of school, up through the 14th, which was this past Friday. You'll see them broken down by area, by staff, by students, and then total. And then at the bottom, the percentage of each of those groups. The next slide, COVID cases in Polk County. This is each window, so that's each 14 days since September 2nd, which would have been our first day that we started tracking this way back in the fall of 2020. And you'll note the number of cases in the county spiked when we went remote at the middle of November through Christmas break. You'll see a high there of 848, and thankfully, we haven't returned there at any point close since. The next slide mirrors that previous slide. These are the cases within the district from the same timeframe, beginning way back in September through the present. Last window, we were heading towards 20, and the reason 20 is significant because that would have put us in remote again, and I don't know that anybody wanted that. We ended that window at 15 in the district, and thankfully, we haven't had any since that window ended last week, Tuesday. So any questions on the statistics? Because this is sort of a logical breakpoint before we get into policy and words and so forth. Any questions that anyone has for me at all about the statistics? Okay. The face coverings policy, by no means am I interested in reading it to you. Everyone is capable of reading that for yourself on the board, and I think that most of the folks in the room are pretty familiar with what is there in the face covering policy. This was adopted way back in July of 2020, and this is where we have been at for this policy since that time. Any questions anyone wanted to ask about or talk about in regards to the actual words there of the policy? Wanted to make a point of clarity in regards to board action in regards to a policy. If the policy is changed, as in you change the words of the policy, that takes two readings to do, this meeting and then the June meeting. So if we change this policy, the first point at which we can go away from masks, if that's what you choose to do, would be June 29th, meaning that summer school would start with masks. But in the first paragraph, it gives the board or the district administrator discretion to go with or without masks. That's why the policy was written that way. You can't make a decision by changing the policy quickly the other way. It has to take two readings. That's the way it is with all policy. So I'll move on, since there weren't any questions there. The April parent communi... oh, sorry. Yep.
Just as a point to people who may or may not know, that summer school, it has already been determined that summer school face coverings are optional. Correct?
Yes. And that's covered here in a couple of slides down the line. The April parent communication, this was regarding face coverings, reiterated from the board the three reasons why we were remaining with face coverings through the end of this present school year. In the spring of 2021, there are 39 school districts that make up CISA 11, which in essence means Northwest Wisconsin. Of the districts that are located in this part of the state, there are 30 that continue to have a face covering requirement. There are nine that do not, and you'll see that breakdown there on that slide. You'll see this slide mirrored two more times, one for summer and then one for fall. Any questions about the CISA... the way that this information was derived was by survey from CISA 11 to all of the district administrators in this part of the state. Any questions about that list? Over the course of the last, call it nine months since we've been in school, we've been in constant communication with Polk County Health, and then thereby with Department of Health Services, and also with the Centers for Disease Control, not in word, but in email from them. We're in conversation with Polk County Health because we're in Polk County. So what Polk County Health has listed for us as their guiding factors are, when in public, wear a face... wear a cloth, face covering over your nose and mouth, stay at least six feet away from others, avoid crowds, wash hands, and stay home if you are sick. This does not reflect vaccination, but please know, the reason it does not reflect vaccination is that information is new, and that information has not been supplied from Polk County direct and direct form. Let me say in addition to that, in order to make decisions as a group based on who is and who is not vaccinated, you're going to need to know who is and who is not vaccinated. And that's not a question that I've ever been interested in asking, unless you are interested. The first point at which the district would ever seek to ask whether someone is, is if we were required to do so by a state, local, or federal authority stating that you have to let them know whether they're vaccinated or not. The Department of Health Services and Centers for Disease Control, masks should be worn for people two years and older. Anytime you're in a public setting, when you are around people who do not live with you, including inside your home or inside someone else's home, when you wear a mask, you protect others as well as yourself, and masks work best when everyone wears one. DHS is the governing agency that Polk County Health takes their cues from. DHS takes their cues from Centers for Disease Control. Updated guidance from CDC, this is from Thursday of last week, I believe that was the 13th. It notes, regardless of level of community transmission, which is tracked by the county in this state, it is critical that schools use and layer prevention strategies, five in this state, it is critical that schools use and layer prevention strategies, five key prevention strategies are essential to safe delivery of in-person instruction and help to prevent COVID-19 transmission in schools, universal incorrect use of masks, physical distancing, hand washing, and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine. Schools providing in-person instruction should prioritize two prevention strategies. Universal incorrect use of masks should be required, and physical distancing should be maximized to the greatest extent possible. Further support for face coverings, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, which guides what we do here, and Amory Hospital and Clinic, both have stated to me, both support the recommendation for face coverings made by Polk County Health, DHS, and Centers for Disease Control. Our law firm, Weld Riley, supports the recommendation of continued use of face coverings, in other words, following what County Health is telling us. Employers Mutual Company, EMC, which is the umbrella governance for our insurance provider, which is Lead Home Insurance, also supports the recommendation for continued use of face coverings, in that they are telling us to follow County Health. Now, they are not saying have or do not have a requirement, Lead Home, EMC, or Weld Riley. They're simply saying, follow what your health department tells you to do. The next two slides are research. These are research studies straight from CDC in regards to the mask mandate that many have chosen to have. This is the supporting evidence for face coverings, these 25 sources. And if you go to the CDC site, you could go into any number of lengths. There are dozens of lengths. There are hundreds of these types of references there. I didn't want to put hundreds in the PowerPoint, so I didn't. The new quarantine option, this is approximately two, three weeks old now. We moved from the 14, which is recommended by CDC, to the 7 and 10, and you'll note the specifics there. If on the sixth or seventh day, there is a negative COVID test, the student returns on the 8th. If on the, if there are no symptoms, that is, and on the 10-day quarantine, if there is no test, they may return on the 11th, again, with no symptoms. Summer school, face coverings will not be required for students in summer school. Clubhouse childcare is under different governance. Clubhouse childcare, the Wisconsin Department of Health Services requires face coverings for students in clubhouse childcare ages five and up. If we don't follow that guidance, we could lose our licensure to provide childcare, and we certainly don't want to have that happen. Students in summer school, under different guidance, I guess I stole my own thunder, that's on the page that you see, the slide that you see here, so I won't repeat myself. The next slide, face covering requirements for summer school. This is broken into three categories. Face covering is required, you'll see the school systems noted there. Face covering is optional, you'll notice we're the first alphabetically of the 17 that have made that declaration. And the last group is really two different categories. They're undecided, and they've said they're undecided, or they simply didn't respond to the survey, so I don't know what they're doing. And that was another 17 schools to make up the 39. Many of these schools could very well have dropped their mandate, many of them have kept it in place. I just don't know. The timeline for fall to make mitigation decisions, i.e. what you're doing with masks, we have a district team meeting and an administrative team meeting on June 8th. There's a board meeting on the 28th, and then reboot that on the 6th and on the 19th. If you're interested in making a decision in regards to fall prior to the 26th of June, and that's a significant date, because that's the date upon which people who are open enrollment to other districts need to let that district that they're coming, the 26th is that date, and the 28th is after that date. So, if you wanted to have a special meeting on just that topic, you could do that before the 26th, and then you could sort of free the docket potentially for what's happening at the actual meeting on the 28th. But, that's up to you whether you want to do that.
Well, we don't, the other districts don't know what they're doing in the fall either.
Well, that's the last slide. I don't, I don't know what other districts are doing. I had a CISA meeting, a PAC meeting, which means all the other district administrators in the 39 school systems, and a question was asked, who's made a decision about the fall? And this is the list. There are 39 undecided districts, at least in that room. There could have been someone in the district that didn't say something, or someone in the room, or someone wasn't in the room that had decided to have masks, or not have masks. I don't know. But, most have not, and according to the survey, none have. So, those are-
Well, in addition, even if we, I think it doesn't make, it doesn't even make sense to meet before June 26th, because last July, we voted against masks in the fall, and then we changed it in August. So, even if we had a special meeting and made a decision, it could easily be changed.
Again, that's up to you. I'll simply schedule a meeting if that's what you want to do, or leave the timeline as it is.
Well, I think, Chelsea, that brings up a point, not only, you know, had we changed policy, but districts have changed policy across the board all year, obviously, and there's nothing saying that what we're going to decide even in July is what anybody would decide in November if there was another state mandate or another recommendation. Any district at any time that even decided that they weren't going to have masks could decide to have masks. So, I think it's a good point either way.
Yeah, it's just depending on what's going on, you know, in the country, and the county, and the school districts.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I wish we all had crystal balls sitting in front of us to make that decision, but I-
Yeah.
-I don't think we do.
No.
Well, it may be, though, that we need to, to say what our intention is, understanding that things can change, but we have numbers that are looking better throughout the whole unit, you know, throughout the whole US. And I think, you know, by saying that we are not requiring masks for summer school, we'll have that information to look at, but we won't have that information to look at if we're trying to make a plan before June 26th. So, I think that if parents are dependent on what our plan is for the fall, and what we expect to do as long as numbers continue to stay low in our county and in our district, and maybe that means, you know, we make a new matrix, or I don't know. But, you know, I'm not sure what that exactly looks like, but it seems like that would be a good thing to do, to, to make a decision based on what we expect to do and what we plan to do.
I could only say for myself, I'm not prepared to make a recommendation about the fall here this evening. I'm not. Maybe you are, but I'm not. For the summer, we've already done that.
I would hope we wouldn't have to wear masks, but I wouldn't be prepared to vote anytime soon.
Yeah, I think we all, I think the sentiment is across everybody, doesn't want to wear these. I don't think we want to be engaging in having kids wearing masks eight hours a day if it wasn't necessary. I mean, I don't, like you said, I mean, hopefully, we will have some information with summer school, but we won't have that information by June, and I certainly wouldn't be comfortable to make any kind of vote based on that.
You'd have two weeks of data, if you will, because summer school starts on June 14th.
It'll be interesting to look to see what our numbers are too for summer school versus numbers of when we have kids back in school. Those numbers make a huge difference of how many kids we have together, how many staff members we have together. All of those things make a difference.
The number of kids in summer, kids and staff in summer school would be about a third of what it would be in, during the school year, both 500 versus 1,600.
Well, I still think that we should make a plan for the fall, and we, you know, we can decide on June 28th, although I feel like if parents are looking for that guidance before they make a decision about open enrollment, on June 26th, you said, or 25th?
26th is the date, the line they draw in the sand, but if the truth be told about open enrollment, there are two windows. There's the traditional window where the 26th is a date that you must follow, and then there's the non-traditional, the alternative application period. You can open enroll to any Wisconsin school, any kid can go to any Wisconsin school on any day of any school year, any year, all year long. It doesn't have to be the 26th, it's just a different application.
So, then they would have to apply again, like if they've had already applied?
Right. It's not a great deal more than what the other application is. I think it's two pages versus one page.
What do you mean, you'd have to apply again?
You have to fill out a different application.
You have to fill out a different application. If they applied for open enrollment now, but they have to decide by June 26th, then if they, you know, decided to say, we're going to stay in Amory, or we're going to go to Clear Lake, and then they wanted to change their mind, then they needed to fill out another one.
The traditional window has one application, the alternative has a different application.
Right. I would just guess that if you're going to apply to leave the district by June 26th, then there'd be no reason to, I mean, if we decided that masks would have to be in the fall, then I would, I would guess that you're not filling out a different application, you're just going to leave the district. If we decided to not have masks, then you would just not follow through with the application, because then you would stay. I would assume-
Right. They have to declare to the district they're going to by June 25th, if they're coming. Does that make sense?
So, does, so do we think that all the rest of the schools will have an answer by June 25th, so that they would know?
I don't know.
Well, that's the hard question is, is where are you going? If it's a moving target for everybody, it's kind of hard to pick and choose which district may or may not do it.
My hunch is most every district's going to make a June or July decision. That would be my hunch.
Do you guys still have a policy?
Okay, this is, this is not a time you can, this is not a time you can talk right now. It's during community comments.
Yep.
So, June or July, June or July is what would, what most districts would do.
Yeah. All right. Anything, Dale?
Well, I would just say, you know, we're intending to go with masks being optional in summer school. I think that would lead us to believe, would be hopeful, that they will be optional in the fall of the year, but it's May 17th, right? We have, I think it's way too early to make a decision for August or September. It could change, you know? It would seem like, you know, evaluating in June, you know, we're later in June. We'd have maybe a week or two of summer school under the, under the belt at that time, that would maybe give us a little better indication, so I would look at June and July before we would know for sure. If people would want to leave, if they want to leave, and we have the June 26th date, I think, is that right? That's the first intended date that they would need to fill out paperwork by. But, it sounds like that's not the drop dead date, they can make that decision at any time. And at that time, the June 26th timeframe, perhaps other schools that people might be looking at going to, could have decisions made by that time as well.
Yeah, I guess I just, I feel like to make a decision about where a child goes to school based on a mask mandate, a plan, I guess that's, seems like jumping the gun to leave a district that provides a lot of opportunities for kids. We love our kids here, we want them to be here, and we certainly don't want to send that message, but I recognize that people have choices. But, I just, I just don't know how we could, how we could guarantee what we're going to do in the fall, as any other district could guarantee what they're going to do in the fall. So, I think by leaving the district based on that, that decision alone, I guess they're not guaranteed anything, so, from any district, ours or otherwise. So, I don't know, I don't know how we come up with a plan at this, this early stage, but I think, I think it's all of our hope that this will all, COVID will go away, and we won't have to be doing this again.
Yeah. Well, it's not going to completely go away, obviously, but-
I mean, obviously, the, the need for all of this will, will die down, so I don't know. I don't think I would feel comfortable making a, a decision about that yet.
I think we should discuss fall at our June board meeting, and what you guys have discussed at your district team meeting and your administrative team meeting, and what our intentions are. And we can certainly look at our mask policy at that time, although we've left our mask policy open-ended so that it is at the direction of the district administrator and the board, so that we have that opportunity to be flexible with what is required.
Yeah, I would guess that these discussions would be ongoing as they've been all year, right? I mean, this has been very fluid all year.
Yes.
Well, it was outside of our control for most of the year.
Well, the administrative team meets every Tuesday, and they can attest the first item on the agenda every single time has been COVID. District team too, so it's not, not discussed.
Anyone else?
Well, so I guess, you know, the only other question is what we do with this, these last couple of weeks of school, and, you know, we have 13 days left, and with the new CDC guidelines, you know, a lot of our teachers that have been vaccinated and staff, you know, if they're following the CDC guidelines, would be able to have that choice, according to their recommendations, and we've said that we've been following the CDC recommendations. Obviously, businesses and schools and everything still can enforce their own policy or their direction, and that, that you have to, you know, CDC says you have to follow the policy of the business, or whatever it is that you're going to. But, I guess I'm, you know, would like to hear from the administrative team what, what they feel like would be the best for these last couple of weeks of school.
Yeah, I think that the CDC recommendations were actually to continue through the end of the school year with facial coverings for schools, for schools, yes. For schools, that was the CDC recommendations as of yet this morning, to the end of the year. So, regardless of vaccination status, and we don't not know, and nor will we ask, I'm not interested in asking anybody if they've been vaccinated or not.
No, no, I am not either. The only point at which we would do that is if a governmental agency said, you got to ask, like for other various vaccinations. But, no one said that to me, and I've not read anything like that, not for us, not for schools. But, if you wanted to hear from administrative team members, I'm not sure who wanted to step up to, to address that, but.
Well, they, you certainly can when you get your piece at the microphone to, to make any comment like that while you're doing your report.
One more time?
Are they doing reports, or is that, was that the only one?
No, there are other topics that they have discussed, but Erin had asked how, how the administrative team members felt, and I was simply queuing them.
You wanted to have them come up separately for that?
I, you know, I feel like we're discussing this maybe right now, so maybe if we continue this discussion, and then they can give their reports. Sorry to make you come up twice.
Okay. I saw Mr. Gold moving, so I think he's first.
Mr. Gold's got his Nikes on tonight. Got your Nikes on tonight, you're ready to-
Making you come up twice.
All right, well, I was hoping just to talk about a lot of positive things here today, but we'll hit it all. First off, I'll go through my information, then I'll answer any questions that you guys have.
I think we just would like to know what about the face coverings, and then we'll, we'll bring you back up for a second round for the things happening.
Wonderful.
Yes.
All right. First off, and hopefully I don't forget any of the wonderful things that have been going on. Prom 2021 was extremely successful. Our kids had a blast, certainly made the most of it, and lots of good memories were made. We did finish up our ninth and our 10th grade ACT Aspire testing, so that is all done in the books, and every single kid at Amory High School is accounted for on our assessments this year. Students have completed their class scheduling for next year. We just finished that up on Friday, and as I explained to a lot of people, you know, we're a small school that tries to act like a big school, and that we try to offer so many darn opportunities for our kids, but we can't run an infinite number of sections of everything. And we certainly try our best, and every year, that's a challenge, but I feel as though we did a great job for our kids. We had a wonderful fine arts concert a few weeks ago, highlighted our art kids, our music kids, a bunch of talented individuals. FFA was able to pull off a modified version of Food for America, so a shout-out to Mr. Meyer and the kids who put together a wonderful performance or program for our younger kids. We have a number of sporting events which are going on every single night. I just got a notification that we had another huge event tonight. Cale Hopkey just broke a 75-year-old school record. He struck out 19 Ellsworth Panthers tonight, and a 6-1 win for the Warriors, so 75 years ago. I saw the name of who it was, but I don't know who the, I'm sure it's an old Amory name. Future events, we've got our senior picnic on Wednesday, taking the kids to Interstate Park for their traditional event. If you guys want to come and crash the party, I'll be grilling brats and burgers, and we'll be ready for you around 11:30. Seniors have their last day of school on Friday. We've got graduation practice, followed by our traditional senior walk. Weather looks nice, the plan is to do most of the senior walk outside this year at the respective, respective buildings. So, lots of hard work has gone into planning that out. We have graduation here on Sunday at 2:00 PM, and we have, we just recently had our senior awards night two last Wednesday. What a great night that was too, and a huge thank you to our- A huge thank you to our community, lots of money given out to our kids, so awesome night. And then we have our last day of school and our underclassmen awards ceremony on June 4th. That's the high school, and if you guys have any questions about those items, I'd be happy to answer.
Now you can address the facial covering situation, what you think and your, what your recommendation is looking at the high school.
Sure, well, you know, this is certainly going to sound like a cop-out, but I'm not as smart as the doctors and those that work for the CDC. The last guidance I saw came out on Saturday that said they recommend that schools stay in face coverings until the end of the school year. This part of the school year is the compulsory attendance, the you are required to be here part. Summer school is not required attendance. And I'd like to think I'm a pretty smart guy, but I don't think I'm as smart as the doctors working for the CDC. So that's where I stand on that.
How is your building atmosphere towards the masks?
Uh, the kids have been doing great, everybody's fatigued, I'm fatigued, I'm not going to lie to you, Keith. Do I have high hopes for next fall? Absolutely. Nothing would make me happier than to show up and have nobody in masks next fall. Nothing would make me happier.
Maybe the lottery.
No, I don't think so.
If you win, I give it to you. Alright.
Do we, do we, I guess, have ideas of what it's going to look like in the weight room or, you know, other kinds of summer activities? It's not summer school, but there's summer activities going on.
Absolutely, yes. You know, masks will be optional for those that do want to wear them. We'll certainly be doing our best to spread things out. But, you know, once again, it is optional for them to be attendance here. You know, are we going to spray down the bar every single time after? No, I do not anticipate that. We will, we're going to do our best, but we're going to get them in and let them participate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
I'm assuming you want me just to talk about the mask mandate this time? Okay. Personally, if you asked me what I would think, I would say I would support the CDC and maintain masks through the rest of the school year. I strongly supported not wearing masks for summer school. If I were to talk to my staff about how they felt about it, I would say that, and I can't speak for all of them, but we do have these conversations quite often in team meetings and individual meetings. I don't have exact percentage, but I have staff that probably would support us not having masks. I would say majority of them do support the masks. Don't have exact percentages, but I would guess it's probably 85 to 15. But I can tell you that I do have teachers who would probably be happy if we didn't continue. But I would say the vast majority of them strongly would be upset if we moved away from it, knowing there's 13 days left. And that's how I would feel as well. I do feel, I do feel for the parents that got up here today. They have extreme passion for their children, and I respect that. And I understand what they're saying too. You know, I understand what they're, what they're trying to say is that we care for our kids, we want the best for our kids, and I think all people do want that. And I would hope that early in the summer, we could have at least an indicator of where we're moving for the fairness of everybody. I don't know when the date line, what that would be. I'm not so worried about the, the summer school or the mandate as far as declaring for open enrollment, because even if you still live in a district, you can, you can move away from that decision. My understanding is that if you say, I'm going to be, I'm going to commit that I'm going to go to X district, but I still live in Amory, you can change your mind and come back because you are a resident. And so that whole deadline isn't as strong as people maybe think it is. I did get a chance to talk to a lot of kids recently. I had a conversation with a parent two months ago, or maybe a month and a half ago, and I said I hadn't heard a lot of issues from kids on the masks. That's not unheard of, you know, they, they're not going to want to come and talk to me about masks, and that would make them nervous. And I wanted them to know though that they are heard, and I, and I do know that probably most of the students don't want to wear masks, but a lot of them do as well. They're not fun to wear, but I do feel that they're, they're, they're doing what we're hoping they're doing. I know there's been a lot of data and statistics thrown out there on, maybe they aren't working and some people feel that way. I strongly would support the science that shows from the CDC that they do. But I want those kids to also know that they are heard too. And so I guess I would kind of just take the stance that I strongly support maintaining the masks through the next 13 days. I support not having them for summer, and I'm hoping we can make a decision sooner than later on at least where we're moving. We can always move and change if we decide, just like we did before. That's kind of how I feel, I guess.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
My response is going to be much shorter than that one, although it was great information, Mr. Benson. I totally support the mask wearing. My students and staff have done an absolutely amazing job this year. I have not tallied my staff, so I cannot tell you a percentage. They have all been extremely cooperative. I've not had anyone in my office saying that they absolutely cannot wear a mask. So I would just say, at this point, I can't give you a percentage, but everyone at the intermediate school, students and staff have been outstanding.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And I'm going to echo what everybody else said. If, if the public could have been at the front of the school on the first day of school, I sat there in anticipation, wondering what was going to come across the sidewalk. I was blown away. The staff, the students, the parents, were all 100% from my perspective behind the fact that we wore masks. We are now on our about 167th day of school, 13 days to go. I want to get to the finish line. The children are amazing, I am so proud of our little babies in the elementary school, they come with their cute little masks every day. Nobody throws a hissy fit. The teachers are behind it, I agree with what Mr. Benson and Ms. Shock said. I haven't polled my staff, but they are completely supportive and have been completely cooperative. So 13 days, let's get to the finish line.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think that the administration.
We got Brad. Yeah, come on, Brad. No, no.
Sorry, Mr. Public, I don't know how I missed you back there, it's the podium, you're right there, I can't see you.
Well, first of all, thanks to everyone who came out tonight, because, you know, this is about communication and ideas, and I just really appreciate the passion of folks on a night like this to come into a board meeting, express their ideas and opinions, and communicate with the school district. In terms of face coverings, really, again, I would echo, I'm certainly not a doctor. I need to look to my local federal and state agencies as far as recommendations, and so I would go with those recommendations. But also, when I think of expectations and norms as a teacher, and how you start a school year, and we had a really unfortunate norm to start the school year with, and that was with wearing a mask. So it's, you know, my hope and many folks have echoed here that, that that's not the norm we start with for next school year. But I know that from my days, somewhat longer ago now as a classroom teacher, that it's, it's a good practice in teaching not to change the norms and expectations in the middle of a school year. Just in the same way if we're writing a new policy or making a change in a handbook, we probably wouldn't implement that with 13, 14 days to go in a school year. So that would be, I haven't, I haven't asked my fellow colleagues, we're busy talking about any number of things, and so that's not something that's come up. I, I don't have any numbers in terms of other staff's thoughts, but I would agree that everyone has cooperated and done everything that they could so that we could make it through the school year with our students and be there for our students as much as possible.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Benson, you can come up and finish for us.
Okay, well, I also just want to shout out to the staff. I think people sort of understand what it's like, but, you know, the kids come in every day, we greet them. We support them as much as we can every day. People have to understand too, that when kids come into class and they sit down, when they get up, that teacher has four minutes to transition from one class to the next. That includes cleaning every single desk, cleaning the door handles. We're staggering lunches, we've maintained and adjusted curriculum and adjusted the schedule to make things work this year. It's been incredibly difficult. It's one of the hardest years, I think, for every educator. They're teaching kids in person, at the same time they're teaching kids that are at home. To do that, they had to master and maintain a live stream and learn new systems to teach remote land in person at the same time. While we also then support kids that chose to do virtual school through the American School at the same time as well. At the middle school, we did it after, unfortunately, this all came down at a timeline where we decided to completely change and adjust our schedule system, while we also adjusted our grading system. And every one of those things would be daunting, and they've done it all and really, really worked hard for the kids in this community, and I'm so proud of the staff. And I know that every principal here would say the same thing about their staff. We had some really cool events though that happened over the last couple of weeks. We just had our eighth grade youth jam, it's our 22nd annual youth jam, sort of an eighth grade graduation party, we held it outside. We had a lot of fun events and competitions and music and food. And we've typically held this at different places. Last, a couple of years ago, we held it at North Park, and that just wasn't an option with all the traffic going through there. So we moved it over to Jorgensen Field, and it was a huge success, and I, I think we'll stay there, it was great. We have the Memorial Day Parade coming up, the Cadet Band, that's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade now. We'll be marching and playing at the Memorial Day Parade on May 31st, followed by the parade in Clayton and Clear Lake in June. And we're excited for the, you know, getting ready for the last day of school, we have some activities planned for the kids there. We're getting ready for summer school, have a lot of really fun activities for kids, and we're looking forward to working with our kids again in the fall. Any questions?
Okay, we just finished our Walk-a-thon, which is our only fundraiser that we do at the intermediate school. And it was just a huge success, and what I love about it is that the kids get donations and it's a physical activity for them. So we're not selling pizzas or cookie dough, we're selling good activities for kids. And a big thank you, we had many different supporters. Katie and the hospital for Power Up, and Erin Osierl for organizing everything, she just did an amazing job. We had our fourth grade band and music concert last week. Once again, the music staff did a great job, and so did Tracy Hendrickson of videotaping it for release to all. It was the speakers that came to the mic. I told Dr. Durfler, I have, over all these years, I have never heard the kids so clearly be able to give their parts, it was, it was wonderful. AIM did their trout release to the Willow River last week. And we've had a little bit of a struggle with our trout this year. And so they were few, but they were big, they were the biggest trout we've ever released, so that was very fun. Coming up at the end of the year, all students will receive a paper copy of their report card, and that will be coming home on the last day of school. Before that though, we are sending our fourth graders to Interstate Park because they study Wisconsin landforms throughout the whole year. And then also the fifth graders are going to Camp Wapple. We're not staying overnight, we don't get to ride the horses, but we are going to be able to do a lot of the activities out there. Intermediate and middle school track day will also be on June 1st. Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I would like to share with you one of the goals from our PBIS committee this year, which focused on teaching our students culturally responsive practices. We believe as a staff that learning about cultures help us understand different perspectives within the world in which we live. We, this year, we focused on learning and celebrating about Asian Pacific Americans, Hispanic culture, Black History Month, Native Americans, just to name a few. We taught our students about the people, their culture, their customs, food, heroes, artifacts, entertainment, and much more. Students learned through morning announcements, displays in the hallway, classroom instruction, and the media center. With support of the Mental Health Grant, teachers were able to purchase a variety of books, fiction and nonfiction that supported student learning. A special thank you goes out to our PBIS Tier One Committee for their time, energy, and creativity in organizing this important work. Learning to read, so students can, so, learning to read so students can read to learn is a primary focus at the elementary school, and I know that you have heard me say that before. Our second graders' Ardvark Club went into full action, and this transformed our reading loft into Arthur's Clubhouse, and our second grade readers joined the club. Students were encouraged to read a variety of books about Arthur and his friends. Club members also participated in a variety of activities that bring books to life such as Arthur's Ears, Cootie Catcher's bookmarks, Arthur's Drawing, with the culminating activity of having the opportunity to visit Arthur's favorite place, the Sugar Bowl, also known as Chet's, Chet Johnson's, for an ice cream cone. The beautiful thing about our reading program for second graders this year is all students participated, so we are very excited about that. We have a lot of work coming up with summer right around the corner. We have our ELA adoption work, curriculum work, PBIS Tier One and Tier Two committee work, compassion resilient work. So even though the summer is coming fast, we still work all summer long to get prepared for the upcoming school year. I do want to send out a very special thank you to our Parents as Partners at the elementary school. It is our volunteer group. They sponsored a luncheon for the elementary staff on Friday, and it was a sandwich from Jimmy John's and potato chips, and we had the Family and Consumer Education Department at the high school make desserts, and they all got a small gift, and that was all sponsored by our Parents as Partners. So thank you to our Parents as Partners that remember the important work that our staff does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue the thread of, of reading here from Cheryl's report. We use Read 180, which is an intervention.
which is an intervention reading curriculum at the middle school and high school. And at the close of each year, we do benchmark testing, we do that three times per year, and then the company helps us pull a data report and really look at what the numbers are, how that connects potentially with changes that we want to make in terms of our instruction, whether students are appropriately placed, those sorts of things. And so this year's data will be pulled within the next couple of weeks, and we'll schedule a, a meeting in early June. So this is one of the advantages of having a, a digital curriculum and partnering with the company to provide an evidence-based intervention. You do get the data, and that's helpful to make decisions. Collaboration, it's exciting that we've been connecting with a local business owner and on a potential partnership to provide work-based field experiences for students with disabilities at the high school. So, this would look like out in the field, in, in a business, students working and being taught by a certified special education teacher vocational skills and activities, those would align with their IEP goals. It would be, you know, an unpaid internship, at least for the moment, but the goal would be to prepare these students to increase their skills so that they can be competitively employed. Because we know that internships are great, that's, that first job that you get working alongside with somebody where you might not get paid, or you get paid very little, but what we're really focused on are outcomes, and this directly relates to DPI's Indicator fourteen about post-secondary transition for students with disabilities, and all students. Quick update, community members may have seen signs around that say "all are welcome here." Those signs were sponsored through the school-based Mental Health Grant, and they've been offered for display by school district employees, local business owners, and community members living within the school district of Amory Boundaries. And finally, we held our last PK through twelve, Special Ed Staff Meeting. We'll continue that model, we kind of always do a discussion about how we'd like to continue to collaborate. We will replace a few of the monthly meetings with a small group, more discipline-driven curriculum work activities. So folks were excited to work, you know, either as speech therapists or LD instructors, those sorts of things, so that they can share information. So we'll be keeping that model, but replacing it just a little bit with a couple new activities. Any questions?
Are there any signs left?
I think there are a few signs left, yeah.
And then how, how would, um, one-
You can connect with us at the Pupil Services Office.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, Dale's got one, don't you?
I do.
Yep.
So, before we move on to the informational items, I guess, I would just like to, you know, I, I guess, address the masks again one more time before we kind of move on with the rest of our evening. You know, we've heard from our, our administrators, we've heard that there are recommendation, and I completely understand that there are teachers and staff that probably are on both sides, would like to see us, us change the masks for the last few weeks, as well as ones that would like us to continue with keeping the masks in place for the last thirteen days. And so, and of course, I think there are parents that are on both sides. I, I think that we have a stronger or a larger population that would like to see us change masks even for these last couple of weeks. And so, you know, I, I am open to changing things, although I don't think that we can change it tonight for any kind of immediate taking action tomorrow. But, and I think there, there needs to be some information about, about changes, if that was a possibility. I don't want to see, I don't want to see bullying or, or problems in the school with kids or adults, but especially with the students, kind of, why are you wearing a mask, why are you not wearing a mask, you know, kinds of, those kinds of things. I've heard of that happening in some other school districts that have changed their mask policy, and I really would like to have, you know, the school year end in a peaceful and positive way. And so if, if we entertain the idea of changing anything in the last, last couple of weeks, I think that we would need a few days to kind of give out that kind of information and expectations for our students. And I do understand that there are only a few days left in our, in our year. But I understand that there are, you know, lots of parents that feel that they would like to make the choice and that they would like them to be optional, even for these last couple of weeks.
Well, I think you, there is a way to change it if you want to make that motion, isn't that correct?
Sure, if you want to make a motion to end the mandate for masks in the district, it isn't a change of policy, it's your discretion as a board to say, "We're no longer doing that," or "We are doing that," that's up to you, the five of you.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like that's what Erin wants to, to, is getting at, I mean, it's-
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, I am open to that, like I said, I don't think that it could take place immediately, but I'm open to that, to leaving that as, as optional, but I feel like then communication would need to go out district-wide, as well as, you know, teachers and staff kind of explaining what that would look like and, you know, telling kids and students that it's going to be optional, but there, really, I don't want that there to be problems about that and discussion, really. I don't want, you know, I don't want kids to be bullied. And I, I feel like kids have already, you know, I know that kids have already felt like, you know, especially at the middle school, I have two kids there who feel like they've been asked, you know, "How come you're not, you know, joining us in not wearing a mask?" or in signing this petition saying we want to end masks, or, you know, things like that. So kids have been feeling kind of bullied or pressured, or whatever you want to call it, but like they're kind of, are being, you know, challenged. And not that challenging, challenging is a bad way, and I'm glad for students and parents to be involved and to be discussing this. But I don't want to see a divisive and problematic and bullying kind of atmosphere for the last few days of school.
I guess I would agree with that, and I, I think that the reason, I think that the way that we curb that from happening is to stand with the CDC recommendations to end the thirteen days, it's thirteen days, to do what we said we were, we were going to do, keep the school doors open, not have that bullying take place. I think you do make a good point, Erin, that we are here to represent taxpayers, not just parents of people enrolled in this school, but of all taxpayers. And I know it seems like there's a lot of people who would like to end the mask mandate and, or this policy, but we don't hear from all of the rest of the people in the community either, who don't have Facebook and who don't have kids in the district, and many of them are elderly. We get handwritten cards in the mail thanking us for trying to do our best to keep a safe environment. These elderly people, you know, are taxpayers too, and they also have to go to the grocery store and the pharmacy where our kids work that are in school. And so by the mitigation efforts I feel that we've taken, I feel like we've been able to help those people stay in their homes, not be in the hospital with COVID. I sat in this chair in August, very concerned about what it would look like to have kids wear masks, very concerned about have the mental health toll that it would take on kids. And I have to say, I am pleasantly surprised that I was very dead wrong back in August. And I think we can look at all of the measures that we've taken. We do have schools who have dropped their mask policy or never had one, so they just had to do away with what the state said. They do have a high amount of kids quarantined, and we don't know if they're positive or not because just schools aren't testing. I mean, they're, not every kid that goes out sick gets tested, so we just don't know what those numbers look like. I think us ourselves here have found kids that were positive just on trying to come back from a quarantine. So we have to look at those numbers too in our data, and I, I think that we have to make good informed decisions with the data that we have. I think Amory's been excellent for so long, this school district, that it, it's, it looks tire, it just looks effortless. Our teachers, our administration, we have had a heck of a couple of years, and this school district has not faltered once in those two years. And I think we all know as a board what we went through in those last two years. And like it or not, we are an employer as well, and I think that was lined out in the District Administrator Report of the Weld Riley Recommendation of going with what the CDC recommends because we are an employer. If we decide to drop this, I feel that we could be charged with providing an unsafe workplace. And I, I think that as an Amory School District, we've really spent a lot of money in just the last couple of years on security and school security and providing a safe workplace and a safe atmosphere for all of our employees, our students, and our parents to come and visit. We have had kids participate in sports, there's been masks worn by some of those same kids who didn't want to wear them in school, they've worn them for sports. I just think that thirteen days isn't a huge ask. I know kids are crabby, I'm crabby, everybody's crabby, the administration's crabby, the teachers are crabby, they don't want to keep telling kids to put on their mask, or, they get to go outside, they get to have mask breaks. I think we've done it a heck of a lot better than some other school districts who I know make their kids still wear masks even outside. For thirteen days to end the year on a positive note, and to, to prevent all of that and just calm everything down, I think we're going to do more harm for everything than good if we go ahead and just change everything now. And I think that was exactly what Mr. Baumganger was saying, that we have expectations and rules, and you do as a parent, and I do as a parent, and you guys have raised kids as parents. And, and the way that we're successful about that and, and, and having teaching kids is having those expectations set out and being firm in those guidelines and the consequences that go with them. And I think to end that now and change everything and get information out, I just don't see it happening in any kind of timely manner for kids to not just be in a, a total disarray. I, you know, I urge, I, I sentiment, I, I second the sentiment that Mr. Benson said. These parents that come here, give up a night, give up two nights, you know, form to petition, they definitely have a passion in their heart for what they believe is right. And I will never criticize anybody one minute of one day for standing up for what they believe in. It never crossed my mind, because I do exactly that. And, but, in this chair, we are responsible for thousands of people, literally thousands of people, sixteen hundred students, staff members. We have to make those decisions sitting in this chair based on all of those people. And not just what's, what we think is best for our family, or if we wear a mask, or we don't wear a mask to the grocery store, and whatever people do. We're not here to judge what people do in their life on any given day, on any daily basis, to any event, just here, because that's our responsibility. And that's the way I feel about if we would change anything in the next thirteen days. But God bless us, masks are optional for summer school.
Yep.
I think just to add a few comments to that, I, I respect the people that came tonight and have their comments and thoughts and opinions and are willing to share those. It's not easy to do, so I, I give them credit for doing that. And I would just make the, the comment that as a board member, sometimes there seems like there's a lot of opposition to masks here tonight, maybe, but when I go out, or when I get emails, or calls, or people stop me in the store, there's just as many people that want to keep wearing those masks that don't. And so I get it, and it's, it's a, there is no easy answer. I look at this as, you know, two, three weeks to go, thirteen days, I guess, right? And summer school, the masks are going to be optional. If I was a parent that had concerns, I would look at summer school as, if things look good and go good in summer school with masks being optional, I would feel pretty confident in expecting that they would be optional in the fall. If things go south in summer school, then it's probably a different conversation or another conversation. At this point, being so close to the finish line, comments from our administrators, I would just, I, I would just, my feeling is just, let's just get to the end of the school year, as we have been, and hopefully summer school goes much better with masks being optional. My thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Dale and Shar, we are so close to the end, we don't, I know probably the majority of the people are fully vaccinated, two weeks past their second shot, but we don't know for sure. And this is mandatory compulsory school attendance. We've had this discussion every single month about lifting the mask mandate, and I've heard both sides pretty much equal. I mean, I don't know, like Tom said, I don't know the statistics of how many people are pro-mask and how many people are anti-mask, but it seems it to be split down the middle. And from my understanding from, you know, I have four kids in the district, and, and I've asked their opinions and, as well as their friends, and none of them, nobody likes wearing masks. I bet if we asked, or took a poll or a survey of everybody, everybody, I bet there would not be one person who says, "I love wearing a mask, I don't mind." No, not one person. But, but we do, and we just, it's thirteen days left, and actually four days for seniors, so it's, it just seems silly to, to change it right now, but if, you know, if that's what, you know, the board wants to make a motion to, I guess I'll vote it down.
I'll take my cue from spending a morning at the middle school with Mr. Benson and a morning with Ms. Shah when the students came in. And we can all take a cue from these kids. They accepted it, they came in like it was just another normal day that they had a mask on. They really didn't fight it or anything else, it was just part of the protocol, and, you know, some went to the office to get a new mask, and, and they're, they're available, and it's, it's, they're so good, an example to us that this is what they, where they want to be, they want to see their friends and everything, and so they just wear the mask, and they don't make a big deal out of it. And I, I thank you too for letting me, you know, come to your school and, and watch them come in. Thank you.
I do think that we have so much to be thankful for in this district, to the fact that we have been in person for most of the year, other than when we had the really high cases in the county, as well as in our district. We've been in person in school, we don't have little plastic, have you seen those pictures of the plastic dividers between each child?
Yeah.
Um, at, in the lunchroom or at their desks. We have not required masks, you know, outdoors for recess and, and, you know, mask breaks, the older kids have had mask breaks and things, and, you know, the kids are, I think, spending more time outside right now with the nice weather. We have a lot of outside events coming up for our kids, and I do think we have a lot to be grateful for and thankful for, and I know our teachers have worked and our staff, not just in cla, in classroom teachers, but our staff, everybody has worked exceptionally hard this year, and I am very, very thankful and grateful that we've had really, for the most part, a, a great year. Obviously, it's had challenges, but when I look at other school districts and either, even like I have a niece that, you know, just started going to school in person like last month, I mean, it's quite amazing. So we have so much to be thankful for, and so.
Yeah, I, you know, I've talked to other board members from other school districts, and in particular, the, the districts that have masks optional right now, and they, you know, they say in their school, it's just as much of a mess as if they had it. So they have parents that didn't feel comfortable with their kids in school because there was no longer masks, so they took their kids out of school. That puts pressure on teachers then to provide more online learning opportunities for the kids, more virtual kids learning at home instead of in school. And I think that sentiment has been echoed even in the community comments tonight, that kids, you know, for the most part, by and large, learn best in face-to-face education. And we would hate to see the other side have to leave because they didn't feel protected, or they, they felt like that this was going to be a problem for them or their situation. In the immortal words of Dark Star and Dan Barrero and my husband, it's all about whose ox is being gored. And we would hate to see that other side too. We represent, we represent those people that want to stay here too. I think- I think we have people that, you know, we say that yes, the vaccines have been available to everybody. There are people on the fence still about being vaccinated. And, you know, if those people chose today to be their last vaccine date, then, you know, two weeks, they would be, they would be at their full vaccination point. And I think we could, we could do a lot of good just to hold strong to that 13 days. And I think there's a lot to consider here and nobody thinks this is an easy decision and I don't want anybody to feel trounced on that they didn't, they didn't, what they wanted certainly didn't happen this time, but, but we are trying and that's my, my feeling to that.
And I appreciate taking the time to have this discussion because I think that we needed to have this discussion. I have, I don't know that everyone understands that as a board, we don't, we are not allowed to discuss these things outside of an open meeting. I mean, I can talk to the board members, but we can't say, what do you think about this? Let's decide how we're going to vote or what we're going to think. We, we have to have these at scheduled meetings that have been posted. And, and so, you know, we, I don't know what, you know, other than comments you've made in the past, I don't know what you all are going to say or how you're going to vote on issues and things like that. And so I just think that we needed to take the time to have this discussion and to hear from our administrators. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Action that you wanted to address?
I don't think we need to take action at this time. I, I think that the outcome is pretty obvious anyway and I think that we really should support our, the recommendations from even especially our staff.
Okay. Well, I think we'll move on then and we'll look for our summer school update from Laura. Sure.
As you can see in the display, we have summer school planned starting on June 14th. We will have three full weeks of summer school, offering both academics and enrichment classes. Swimming lessons will begin during week C in the afternoons. So students will be able to attend academic or enrichment classes in the morning, have their lunch here at school, and then get on the bus to go to New Richmond to have swimming lessons in the afternoon, having essentially a full day. In July, the, if we could go back just one slide, thank you. In July, the swimming lessons will continue on July 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. Also during that week from Monday through Friday, so including the 9th, we will be having Pioneer School. The students will be bused to Balsam Lake for that event. And now if we could go on to the next slide, please. In August, in the first two weeks, we will offer both enrichment and, and academic classes in the morning again. And we were also able to schedule swimming lessons, a second session in the afternoon after the lunchtime. So we'll be able to bus them there again to have a full day. For our classes, we have academics for Welcome to 4K through 8th grade, English and Math. We have six weeks of 69 different enrichment courses. I was very excited about that. I was not knowing with our crazy year, who would be confident about teaching in the summer. I was very glad that a lot of the people who had planned to teach summer school last year when we needed to cancel were willing to run their courses again. We are also having the Pioneer School in that authentic one-room schoolhouse in Balsam Lake. Our classes for enrichments range from arts to, we've got physical activity classes, science and technology, cooking, literature, world studies, and six different levels of swimming lessons for first through 8th grade students. We can go on to the next slide, please. I'm very proud of the teaching staff that we were able to, to draw from for the summer. We have 52 different W, Wisconsin DPI certified instructors, ranging from waiting for their, their initial certification from Wisconsin. They've blocked, they've passed their tests and they're just waiting for that actual license copy to come. We also have quite a few instructors who taught for us throughout their career and are returning to teach in the summer. We also have some current, quite a few current Amory teachers who are joining us, visiting instructors from Unity, Clear Lake, and Washington DC. Yes, she is dual certified in Wisconsin as well. I think this year we have more visiting instructors than we've had before. It's really catching on and I think it's because of our generous compensation. So I appreciate that. It makes it easier to convince people to come over our way. We also have some school specialists, not classroom teachers, but they are allowed according to DPI to teach in summer school. And we also have a lifetime license holder who actually began her career in a one-room schoolhouse. I think that's something to brag about. All right. We have 458 students who are registered for Welcome to 4K through 8th grade classes this year, but we are going to be able to add some to that number because at the high school and at the middle school, teachers report to me the, the numbers who are participating through band and weight training. We get a lot of hours through Ag Ed and Drivers Ed and orientations. I did listen to some of the comments of the board members concerned about mask shaming and bullying, which we know is, is an issue. And I've already planned in the summer school confirmation letters with schedules, which always does include our behavior policy that was adopted two years ago. I am planning to make a very clear expectation about respect when it comes to the mask issue, that no matter whether they're wearing one or they are not, bullying isn't okay here. It just doesn't work. Do you have any questions regarding summer school?
Yeah. What is that Washington DC teacher teaching?
It's a former student of mine. She's going to be teaching with her mother and her grandmother for Pioneer School.
Very cool.
Erica Leadholm has taught that now for several years with her mom and grandma.
Got it.
Yep. Wonderful.
Any other questions?
Well, I appreciate that you're addressing that before summer school begins.
Yes.
With the masking being optional, you know, I, I think, you know, that's a good word is respect and that we need to, empathy, Ella Williamson brought up earlier, but, you know, we just need to have a respectful attitude here, especially when masks are optional in summer school.
We just, that's our culture here at the Amory School District of respect and it just, it needs to continue no matter what changes come at us. All right. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to action items and the first one on the list is a school calendar change.
Okay. The school calendar change, the start of school remains as you see on the calendar itself, September 1st, 2021. By law, you cannot start school prior to September 1st of 2021. We are not proposing to start before that. What we are proposing is an additional optional student contact day on August 31st, which is Tuesday prior to that Wednesday start. And what we're going to be doing on that day varies by building developmentally. At the elementary, we're going to start our day with responsive classroom, teach and review lean elementary Warrior Way rules, which is the PBIS feature, teach the routines, recess, specials, and lunch. And lastly, school pictures. And a school picture is during a school day is a good two, three-hour chunk of the day and it is a bit difficult to have a smooth day when your kids are in and out at various times throughout the day. At the intermediate, sort of mirrors what the elementary is doing in regards to Warrior Way PBIS, teach and review daily routines, similar to the elementary, and then again, school pictures. At the middle school, we have students rotating in meeting, going over expectations, procedures, syllabus information. The students attend a full applied arts class to start the year, gym lockers, art supplies, tech ed, safety, et cetera. Students are going through PBIS expectations there, outdoor team building activities, doing a Warrior Way celebration in the gym, and lastly, school pictures. And at the high school, again, it just looks different based on developmental level, welcome assembly, intro of new staff, and they are also going to work in pictures. Again, this is not a required day. We won't even be taking attendance on August 31st, but what we have found in the past, when we start prior to September 1st, our attendance rate looks just like it is September 1st, where 95% of our kids are there. But the official first day is September 1st. So to make this change, you would need to have an action to do so. And if you have any questions, I will try to help.
So this is all kind of new with the school pictures then on day one?
Yes, we have, we've booked that in with Cahills already. They'll simply have a couple crews and they'll knock it out pretty quick. They do, they go pretty fast anyway. They have a really smooth operation there.
It's kind of nice because everybody seems to kind of get dressed up for the beginning of the year, like on day one. Because, you know, like by September, like whatever, 20th, when they have it, they're like, yeah, whatever, who's rolled out of bed?
Oh, my God, it was mixer day!
So this is kind of cool.
The, the request from the elementary and intermediate was to make sure they go first right away in the morning, obviously, because they're not going to keep her together until 2 o'clock, I don't think.
Yep. And do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the school calendar change.
And a second. Shar, any other discussion?
Would open houses still probably be on the Wednesday before?
We have got open houses scheduled at other times. It's not going to fit to do an open house during a school day because parents by and large aren't available to do that. And staff, once you start doing an open house, they're locked in wherever they're physically located, so those will be done different times. We talked about it, but logistically, it just wouldn't work.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Next, we have COVID language in our.
We adopted COVID language way back before the school year began. It's been, the proposal is to revise it as part of the certified staff handbook and also as part of the support staff handbook. And the revision, you'll see there, there's only one item that's been changed. So if you're looking at the first document, which happens to be the certified, it's the second to last page, page eight. I think I got it. Yeah, that's the certified. On page eight, it's noted there in yellow. And basically what it does is it eliminates the COVID leave language, which what the COVID leave language did, if you were a person that was positive for COVID or you were a close contact or you had a family member that depended on you for care, you would then head out and you would be covered, you would be paid during the time that you were gone. Now we've gotten to the end of the school year. We're going to do away with that policy. So in the spring, staff wouldn't be covered if they had to leave for COVID. Most districts dumped this on March 31st because that's the point at which you can no longer get a tax break. We're one of the very few that's left standing in the CISA. So that's the proposal. You can certainly keep it in there if you want as well. That's your discretion.
Would this take effect before the school year is over?
It would, no, it would not take effect until after the school year is over. In essence, it takes effect on July 1. All the handbook changes take effect at that point. And it doesn't really.
That's contract renewal, right?
What was that?
That's contract renewal, right?
It is contract renewal and it, and it really doesn't apply until you get to the point where we're back in school in the fall. And who knows what that picture looks like at that point.
Yep.
And this is something we can always revisit if the federal.
Bring it back in August if it's.
You can put it back in, you can eliminate it for good, however you see fit.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the changes to the compensation and benefits.
And that's for both certified?
For both certified and support staff.
Seconded.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, Nina, you've been sitting there patiently, patiently. We all want to take a 15-minute break.
All right. So the last time we, that I, we adjusted the clubhouse childcare fees was as far as I can tell, January 1st of 2019. So it's been a while. So this is what, after meeting with Mr. Duffler, looking at childcare's in New Richmond, Osceola, St. Croix, and there, this is the increase we are proposing. So from, it's about a 5% increase.
$10 per week across the board?
Yep. Other than, I just like to keep it, the numbers even, so it's only a $9 increase on the two-year-old side.
Two-year-olds.
And in our contract, we also have an option for families to do a half-day. I found no one really takes that option and it's not cost-effective at all for staffing-wise, so I'd like to scratch that out as well, which wasn't on there, but.
And this wouldn't become effective until July 1?
Yes.
Into the new budget year.
Okay. And the increases, you know, to support staff retention, staff salaries, as you know, turnover is one of our biggest issues with clubhouse, so.
I will make a motion to accept the new clubhouse childcare fee increase and contract change. I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have elementary and intermediate device purchase by Clint Wallen.
And I'm going to handle that one. I don't think Clint is with us. I'm going to handle that one. This changed a great deal about middle of last week. What we were originally set to do, as you see on the slide, is to purchase on rotation devices for the elementary and intermediate school students. We were set to do that. We received, we put out the call for bids, we received one bid and we were set to take action on that. Then approximately Wednesday of last week, we found out that there is a possible reimbursement for devices. The district may be eligible for funds to purchase student devices through the $7.1 billion emergency connectivity fund. Devices funded through this program cannot be ordered until July 1. The recommendation would be to put this device purchase on hold while we explore this option and await more details. Long story short, if we wait and we apply and we get accepted, we could purchase all of our devices at the elementary, all of our devices at the intermediate school for $0 and it wouldn't cost the district and the taxpayer as a dime. That's an option we can wait a month to find out about. If you want to proceed forward with the bid that we secured, we certainly can do that as well. But my recommendation is to table this until June and then we'll know whether we've been accepted or not.
Well, I'd move to table this decision until our June board meeting.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Complete sense, yeah. Potentially a lot of sense, right?
A lot of sense, yeah. I'll second.
200-plus.
My question is, well, first of all, do we own the devices that they're currently using? Will they have devices available if we wait?
Yes, they'll have, what they're using now, they'll have in the fall. We'll simply wait until the new ones arrive, whether we order it through our budget or we get this through the federal government. It's one way or another, we're going to get them. September 1st is looking sketchy in regards to what technology looks like nationwide, as in we can't get the devices because the vendors can't produce them and get them here, not because the trucks aren't running. There is a really big shortage nationwide.
But these are for the elementary school and the intermediate school?
Yes.
So these students aren't usually like taking them home every day or not?
No.
They're staying at school and they're.
There's classroom sets typically that are used while they're here.
And when is the last time we purchased the devices that we're planning to refresh?
The devices are always on a three-year rotation, a three-year lease typically with a buyout option at the end of it. So that's what it looks like for student or staff devices at any building level.
Yeah, just my understanding too, I work with Clint and Sean too, that it's, there's some logistics to work out where purchasing versus leasing and that to be determined and probably discussed when they find out more about the, it comes to rerate. So we work with somebody that helps us with the E-rate program and she'll have more information for us, it's coming soon, so, and that's, probably we'll get more advisement.
We just don't know yet, but hopefully we'll know a lot more on June 28th.
A motion made and seconded to.
I second it, yeah.
Yep. To defer, table this action item until June 28th meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll table that until June. Now we're looking for our English Lingual Arts curriculum.
This is always an exciting time of year to bring before you a lot of work on behalf of the teachers and the administrators. We have our six, our nine, sixth through 12th grade reading language arts have been working since last spring. And we had our curriculum oversight committee meeting. Shar was at our meeting and all of the materials were passed and so now I bring them to you for final okay. The first sheet is just a cover sheet and then I will go into each one. But the reading language arts at the high school is requesting a little over $8,000. Reading language arts, sixth through 12, a little over $71,000. And then because our middle school science, seven years ago, purchased a program and they have been using a digital license through that program and that has stopped at the end of this year and they don't plan on continuing it. And so our middle school science teachers looked for a new product and I'll be showing you that. And this is for a three-year quote for them because in three years, they will once again be up for curriculum money. And then every year, the intermediate and elementary have those consumables. And those are the things that we use up every year and need to reorder. And that's just a little over $10,000. So our total bill, 90, just a little over $91,000. So if you go to the next slide, that is our high school. And I also want to tell you that Mr. Gould supported his reading language arts teachers last fall and they purchased, no, actually it was last summer, wasn't it? And they purchased materials through the high school department. So that's why their request is a little bit smaller than the middle school. They'd already spent quite a bit of money. So they were looking at a number of new books, as you can see, over 300 in total. They like some little DVD drives, a number of other things to support their awards. And then they have what it's called Lit Charts and that's a subscription and it's for 10 years because that's what our rotation is currently on, is the 10-year rotation. And then we've been working with a company called Grammarly. And I have to say that Lisa Rilo has really tried very diligently to get a clear picture from them and it has been very difficult. And so we're thinking that this is a three-year subscription with this cost involved, but it may not. And if it's over that, we're not going to purchase it. If it's that number or under, we will purchase it. But as of tonight, we do not have a quote from that company. They've been a little hard to get a hold of. Middle school is doing a whole new program and it's called Study Sync. And they have had it in district and they have been working with it. We do have Laura here tonight if you have any questions about it. But Study Sync for 10 years is at each grade level, sixth, seventh, and eighth. As you can see, the total is just a little over $56,000. And then if you keep going, there is the McGrath Hill additional digital subscriptions for the 1656 and that is for a larger seventh grade class. And then they have something called Vocabulary, which is an online program. And they were able to get a five-year subscription. That's all the further that they will go into the future, which is kind of nice because you can see if you really like it or not. So the total there at the middle school is a little over $71,000. Right below that is the digital license from Kessler Science and that is a three-year. And Danielle and Ariel did quite a bit of research on that. It doesn't match exactly to the old program, but they felt very comfortable in recommending that one. And then consumables for 21, 22 are all typical consumable, use-up notebooks and different things like that. Do you have any questions for me or for the teachers that are here? And we are also under budget as of right now, which is...
That's exciting.
Isn't it?
Thank you.
Yeah, I sat in on this meeting as I'm part of the curriculum oversight committee and everything was extremely well laid out. Obviously, they've done their due diligence, looking at the curriculum that they feel is going to really benefit our students. And a lot of work clearly has went into picking the curriculum that our students will be using and have a good quality of education. So I think I would feel confident in approving the curriculum and consumable materials for 2020, 21, and 22 school year.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Erin? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Orlie.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks for all your work, everyone on the committee and did all the research.
George and I will tandem this piece. This is the building and grounds update. You've seen this slide deck a couple of times before. The first slide, you'll see the pie chart, that's from April of 2017 when we passed the referendum. It was a $1.9 million recurring referendum. The slice of the pie that you're looking at is the $700,000 piece for maintenance and security. That's what, that's the dollars from which these items draw from. The 2020, 2021, all of these items were proposed, approved, and are all done. The carpeted hallways, vinyl tiling, tennis courts, PAs, clocks, and auditorium lights, that's all finished. So that's been budgeted for and wrapped up. The next slide is, in most cases, stuff that you haven't approved yet. You have approved the playground equipment, the gym floor, and the through-wall flashing. The pieces of the pie that you have not, the small vans, flooring in classrooms, terrazzo, and update of a middle school classroom, those are all proposals to be done in the 21, 22 school year, meaning they happen after July 1st. Those are all items that would need to have your approval. You don't need to weigh in quite yet because there's a couple more slides. The 22, 23, these are all proposals. These numbers will change and that we're a year and a half, almost two years removed from this. These are all items that are on the deferred maintenance list still from way back in 2017. These are all items that we would like to address through referendum dollars, switchgear, football scoreboard, gym floor, sanding, skid steer, tuck pointing, man lifts, baseball press box, entryway doors, and new bus cameras. And then there are, I'm not going to belabor the point, other than to say, there are things that do not fit in the budget. The items that are on the high school list, remember, again, the high school's a 1976 building, built for $3.7 billion. Just to do through-wall flashing at the high school alone, all the way around the building, would probably cost you about $3 million. So you'd only have $700,000 left to do the rest and that just would not work. There are tens of millions of dollars here in deferred maintenance in the district, much of which is at the high school. Middle school's got some issues that need to be addressed as well. I'm not going to go through all of them because you're going to hear a lot about it in the month of June. The intermediate school, it's, I've said this to Orlie many times, we keep referring to the intermediate school as the new building. This building's 20 years old, so it's not new, newer than the other three, certainly. And then the elementary school, there are a variety of items that we're looking at there as well. And lastly, there are grounds items. It's not a building-specific item, but rather something that's just on the grounds of the school district of Amory. So the only thing that you are approving as part of this item on the agenda is the items that are proposed for building and grounds in 21, 22. Those are the items. And three of them you've already approved. So questions that you might have for George or for myself? If not, you would need to take action, however you see fit.
What upgrade of middle school classroom is that? A specific classroom?
Yeah, it's a special ed classroom that they're putting a glass wall in there. Basically, noise for noise disruptions.
...to support a specific grade level management of students by the means...
Yep. So basically, her office within, she'll have an office within her classroom there and can work with kids without the disruption out in the classroom. And cabinets.
And flooring in classrooms at the intermediate and middle school? Is that like all of them or?
No, not all.
I wouldn't think so.
No. Tom and I worked on that today. We're going to shoot for 10 classrooms at the middle school. There are four here. That'll be carpet tile. I've kind of loosened my grip on carpet, I'm not a carpet guy, but at least the carpet tile, if there's a bad one, we can pull it up and replace it. I'd like to say that it's kind of 50/50 around here as far as people wanting the tile compared to the carpet, but more people still want that carpet. It's, the classrooms are a lot, the noise levels are, you know... So we have one tile, vinyl tile going in over here, and four classrooms of carpet tile.
Hmm, okay.
And that number is big. It basically did kind of include a lot more. And once we get into this, depending on the installers and how much they're able to do, we may do some more yet this summer, or we may do some Thanksgiving break or over Christmas break. They figured they could probably do a classroom a day at the middle school. But one company to tie up for two and a half months of their work, that's, there's going to be a lot of lake owners and homeowners that are mad that their living room's not getting done, so, yeah, that number could be used elsewhere if we don't use it all.
So again, you would need to take action if you wanted these projects to get done?
Are the two small vans, are they being, are we replacing?
Replacing.
Couple. And we anticipate those to be 21,000 apiece?
Yep, we're working local and we are hoping to get a package deal, two of them for 40.
Are we going to be able to get them?
Not right now.
Well, they're one of the premium value.
They're not available. No.
Right. There's nothing available.
I can't say yes. I'm hopeful, but we can't control the market on that one.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Yeah.
And where is the terrazzo at the middle school? Is that the main cafeteria area?
Yeah, when you walk in, the main commons area and that long hallway they call Main Street, that's, that has coats of wax on it since 1992. So it basically has to be ground off, just like we did at the elementary school. The plan is, is we won't put wax back down. We'll just polish it with a diamond. We'll be able to save money on waxing and I think that it holds up and looks better. Wax doesn't, yellow like it used to, but if you don't do a good job of scrubbing and recoating it, that dirt finally starts to show its darkening. And we kind of did a test patch out the north end. If you're ever there, you wonder why that one's a little brighter? We ground it down just to see what it would look like. Because that is a different animal over there. It's terrazzo, but it's terrazzo squares. So our fear now is, is in the grout joints, that's even got thicker pooling wax and it's really a son of a gun to get up, so, but that's, yep, that's a lot of terrazzo. That number's a pretty good one. I actually did get one bid and it's very close to that. But I was able to use the elementary school, the school's square footage and kind of gauge it by that.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion. Did we already make a motion?
Yes.
Sorry, this was discussion.
Erin has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Dale? Any other talk? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, George. And thank you for turning the fan off.
Well, my hearing's so bad, I thought, oh. And then when that gal was here in the front, I thought, I'm not going to, yeah, I'm not going to turn it on.
Yes, yes.
Next time I will, because Andy will be mad.
Yeah. It's been a struggle to hear sometimes when she kicks in and goes and that, so, thank you.
Yeah. Update on that elementary school, you want to see a cool room. It's unbelievable how that, how big that room is now that those two air handlers are pretty much out of there, so...
Is that your new office now, their hiding place?
I was looking at it thinking, because he doesn't...
No, we're going to move Cheryl there.
All right.
No one will bother you.
You want me to hang?
Yes.
Next up is the professional services provider.
Okay, the manner by which you created deferred maintenance list is by having a professional performance contractor come in and do that work with an architect, with a district person, and that person is here, George. In 2017, that's what occurred. And the outfit that did that was Kraus Anderson. They came in and worked with our adopted, by your approval, architect, LHB, Troy Miller specifically, and George, our maintenance guy for buildings. Now, they are not the only outfit that does this work, as you see right there on that first page, Kraus Anderson does this work, Myron does this work, Markan &amp; Johnson does this work. Those are really the only three in this state, but there are others that do this work, but just not as big a scale. These are the three that have expressed interest in doing the deferred maintenance list as we move forward into 2021 and beyond. Now, just to run through those a little bit with you, we have an existing relationship with Kraus Anderson and it's not 2017. The existing relationship goes all the way back to the point at which we added on to the library, or added the library and added the auditorium, and that was 1997. They are the outfit that built this building here. They worked with Ms. Shock, actually. And you'll see, there's a list of schools that they have worked on in this part of the state. There are a lot of schools, all of these schools are CISA 11 schools. This is their area, this is their neck of the woods in so many ways. The second outfit is Markan &amp; Johnson. You'll see, again, they do work in this part of the state and to the south and certainly to the east. We don't have a relationship with Markan &amp; Johnson, we have not worked with them in the past. We met with them last week, but that's as far as our relationship has gone. And then lastly, Myron, their list is certainly long. They are headquartered typically out of the Appleton area with an office in Eau Claire. Most of their work is to the far east part of the state and moving towards the south part of the state. And you'll see by the list of schools, if you know your Wisconsin geography, that that's where they're located. My recommendation, based on the information that George and I have received, we've met with all three, is to go with the outfit that we have the existing relationship with, which is Kraus Anderson. If you feel differently, you certainly, as a board, can go a different direction. We can bring them in and you can see what they have to say, or you can act another way if you see fit. So I'll turn it over to you for questions and however you want to go.
It was quite a lengthy proposal, list project that they went through, Kraus did when they were here. You took them around, they did...
Well, the deferred maintenance list, that's pages and pages and pages deep.
Yeah.
It was at a point of, please stop.
Stop telling us all the things that are bad, that we need to work on.
Yeah, I've actually done quite a few studies from Focus on Energy, the ACISA study. Jim had met with Kraus. They started a study. So, I mean, it's nice to have, and then basically I used that study as part of that 10-year plan for Fund 46, so that was kind of nice. But I don't, they're all good companies. I've never, I know Kraus Anderson, we see them at Milwaukee and Myron down there, but I've never really officially worked a project, so it's nice for me to, I don't have to, I don't have anything that's glaring at one person that I'm going to pick one, I would be fine with any of them.
In the bid, dollar value, the second lowest, very small margin, was Kraus Anderson. The lowest was Myron, only slightly, and Markan &amp; Johnson was higher. So if you're talking dollars and cents, that's part of the picture too.
Yeah.
But again, my recommendations, based on who we have a relationship with, we've done all of our work with Kraus Anderson for... done all of our work with Kraus Anderson for a better part of 25 years.
What was the bid on? Like, was it on?
The bid on the work to do the deferred maintenance and also if we decide to do something about the deferred maintenance, which would have to be a referendum, that they would do that work. Obviously, a general contractor doesn't do that work for free. That's their business. So that's what the bid was on.
Will I make a motion that we go with Kraus Anderson as our professional performance contractor?
Second that.
Motion made and seconded for Kraus Anderson to be our professional performance contractor. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, George.
You're up, Andrew.
All right. First of all, I want to thank everyone that stuck around to hear me speak.
You know how to clear a room.
Just for you.
It's a very exciting time in the business office, getting close to the end of the fiscal year, you know, so. This year, I'm not nearly as stressed as I have been other years, so. Because I just don't know what's going to be going on, so why be stressed, right? No, next year's going to be an interesting time for funding the state. But anyway, one of the most exciting things we get to do is renew our student insurance. And if you look at the slide, I guess, the handout, you'll see that we had very little benefits paid. And I think you all probably figure out why that is. We didn't have sports or limited sports and kids in school and for different times and just, and because of that, we had actually a decrease in our premium this coming year, along with, it's based on enrollment. Enrollment went down, as you know. And so really, it's pretty straightforward as to what we're looking at as always. So any questions on the student insurance? Nothing's changed about our policy or anything like that, so you just need to approve it.
I would make a motion we approve the student assurance services as presented.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve our student assurances services. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. That was a short moment in the sun, wasn't it?
Yeah.
All that buildup.
There's more months coming up. Next month with the preliminary budget will be interesting, so, just because, you know, next month.
And next, open enrollment.
Okay. Open enrollment is always an action item, open enrollment in and open enrollment out. You'll see a two-sided sheet there. We have 18 students that have declared the intent to open enroll in to the district. And you'll see on the backside of that sheet, you have a total number of 40 that have applied, open enrollment out. The most common destination, twofold, New Richmond and Clear Lake, which has pretty much always been the case. So you would need to approve those if that's what you want to do.
And we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the open enrollment applications in and out of the district for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Sorry, I have one question. So, why does it say like, for example, 4K Clear Lake Unity? Is that...
They can open enrollment to more than one choice.
Okay, so that's like their second choice or something?
Yeah, there's a first or second choice.
At the very top of the page, it says they can submit up to three applications, so that's just what they are.
And some do.
Yep.
Sorry, thanks.
Good. Good for clarification. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion's carried. Now we have staff contracts.
Uh, this isn't merely a, I don't, we don't have a visual for it. It's an item that you need to act on. We are doing staff contracts and letters of appointment for certified staff, bus drivers, and support staff. Those contracts are basically ready to deliver and then staff sign up and they come back for some more action here in the school district of Amory. But this is contract season, so you would need to take action on those contracts.
I think we'll group them all together as one motion.
I think so. I'll go ahead and do that and I'll make a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 staff contracts and letters of appointment for certified staff contracts, bus driver contracts, and support staff letters of appointment.
And a second?
Second.
Dale, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We're good to go. Now we have personnel action.
Woo!
We're at the bottom.
We made it.
We made it. So personnel action, you have new employment contracts, extracurricular contracts, resignations. This is the hiring season, so the list is lengthy. I thank all of our building principals and other supervisors. It's been a lot of hiring. We've had some pretty sizable retirements, but I think we've done really well and I couldn't be prouder of the work that they put in. There's not much they do that's more important than hiring good people. So these are the personnel items before you, for your approval or denial.
Is there a motion to accept the personnel?
I'll make a motion we approve the personnel action items.
Second.
Erin, is she second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? They're approved. Good. And now I will look for a motion to go into closed session considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, paragraph 1, subparaphrase C.
So move.
Shar, second?
Second.
Dale, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We're in closed session.